So committing and committing the whole meeting to order, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Ford?
Present.
Mr. Nicholson?
Present.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Present.
And observing, we have, um, Dr. Tottwiler Superintendent, Ms. Rosero Deputy Superintendent, Mr. McHugh Business Manager, Mary Jewels Secretary of School Committee, and Attorney John Miles.
And Mary. Great, and and now we have, uh, Member Gailey as well.
And now we have Mary.
Wonderful, so, uh, this is the next, uh, chapter of, uh, part of Policy Manual Overhaul, and, uh, we're gonna start with a couple items that Attorney Gallo had been working on, um, before we sort of continue through the alphabet, um, with Ms. Presser from MASC who's also joined us. Uh, you may recall that one of the open issues from our last discussion was with respect to the, um, discipline code and specifically the, the goal of making sure that the, uh, verbiage on, uh, prohibited behavior covered the behavior that we wanted to, it wasn't too narrow, which was a concern in the way it was written, but then also wasn't, um, didn't create any kind of ambiguity or, or, uh, catch things that we didn't want to catch, um, in order to protect, yeah, Ms. Jewels.
Um, I believe we were gonna let Kevin McHugh finish Section D first, and then we were gonna go to Mr. Gallo. That was how the email was sent out.
Okay, that's, that's.
Is that okay?
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's fine, okay. Alright, so, uh, Mr. McHugh had, was advising us on the, uh, budget policies, um, and we had been working our way through those, and so Dorothy, Presser, I, uh, Ms. Presser, I believe you have, uh, um, notes on that in terms of where we left off and, 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 uh, the, uh, different versions that we should be reviewing?
Yes, I, uh, yes, I do. And I think I may have changed my setup, so you don't have to bear with me so much in my, um, in my going back and forth and scrolling, so let me give this a try here. Okay. So you should be seeing, uh, DF at this point, is that what you're seeing?
Yes.
All right. Um, so my, um, notes on DF were that, um, really unless you wanted to update a little bit of the language to say school district instead of school system, or anything along those lines, the only thing I would recommend changing here is really the entire policy is about gifts and contributions, I would just retitle it Gifts and Contributions.
Okay, that's what I mean, I mean, I think, um, we're making those sort of language changes just uniformly throughout anyway. Um, okay, yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
Uh, uh, I'll leave him see, I agree, because revenues for non-tax sources is, is broad, but then you go into the content of things, and it's really specific, so why, why not just make it specific?
Great, great.
Okay. So then the next, um, revenues from, um, school-owned real estate, uh, as per Chapter Forty, Section Three in part, um, is actually not a direct quote. Um, sometimes, you know, we've run across policies that are really just directly quoted from the law. This one isn't quite, um, so I would suggest that maybe wanna, um, reword it a little bit for clarity, um, and, and just, uh, add Chapter Forty, Section Three as, um, a legal reference as opposed to keeping it in the po- in the title of the policy.
Is there a quick question?
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
So you, what, your suggestion is to take out the, the language that's in quotations and stick with the second, uh, paragraph? Where to?
Um, so, you know, there's an, there's another aspect of this, which is that, um, in another section, in Section K, you actually have a couple policies about, um, school, uh, y- this use of school buildings when they're, um, you, you renting out the property or allowing, um, other organizations to use the property as long as it doesn't interfere with school programs. Um, the only part in here that is not in there is about making them available for rent or lease. So another way to look at this, I was just looking, actually, uh, uh, you know, I had done these notes earlier and then was thinking about that today. Um, that might be another way to look at it, and, and maybe, uh, Mr. McHugh has, uh, a thought on that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to know, uh, get input from Dr. Tottwiler and Kevin to see if this is something that we do, and is this where we would rent space to a church on the weekend to use the school, is that, i- i- is this kinda touching base with that?
Actually, we probably use the other one more than we would use this one, you know, 'cause that's, I thought was a cl- I don't have it right in front of me at the right moment, but that's clear, 'cause that's where I, I think we actually rent out the facility. So, I mean, we could have it duplicated, uh, and clean it up, I think, just to match, that's all, if you wanted in two different spots, or do you just wanna move it out of the facilities?
The on- the only thing in here that's not in there is the, um, keeping the funds in a separate account. Which you would do anyway, it would be a revolving account.
That's correct, so would it be better just to, to leave this and just duplicate the language and leave the revolving account language here? Dorothy?
Um, e- w- uh, in some ways, you don't really even need to leave the revolving account language, because you have, you would have language, I think, in another policy about keeping accounts separate.
Right, I mean, I, I, you know, I could see staying with the facilities, 'cause that's typically where majori- you know, the facilities rental is, uh, is more in depth than this. But, uh, yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think, you know, I'm not sure about the legal reference, I'm not sure if it's on the other one or not, but that's.
Well, we can, we can make sure it is.
Yeah, so then that would, we could eliminate this one altogether and just put it over the other one.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and if you want, I, and I apologize, I really didn't think of it till I was reviewing things for the, um, for the meeting tonight, that this information actually does reside in another section. So, um, I could, we could do a couple things here, I could bring up the policies from the other section to look at at this point, we could hold until next time to go over it, whichever you prefer.
Sorry, Ms. Presser, you're saying that the options are to, can you say that again?
So in Section K, you have a number of policies around use of the facilities for non, by non-school, non-school department entities.
Yep.
Um, and everything that is covered in this policy is really covered there in more detail. Um, except for the little section about that the funds would be used, you know, that funds would be put in a, in a separate account, which would be covered under your regular accounting policies, so I don't think you really need them.
So we could, so we could just strike this?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And, and, uh, what, i- if I can, uh, chime in, uh, Ms. Presser, my, my, so when I'm reading this and I see something in quotes, I'm assuming that quote is from Chapter Forty, Section Three?
It is not exactly what Chapter Forty-seven, Section Three says, because in the quotes, it says Lynn's School Committee, which obviously is not in Chapter Forty, Section Three.
Yeah, so, so, so the quotes don't make sense to me, that, that's, so, so what, wh-, so, wh- you know, that, that's what, what I'm thinking, so, if, if it's not needed, if it's already addressed in other areas, and if it doesn't, um, uh, change the ability for the school committee to make available certain spaces for the, the general public as, um, uh, a- as a law by law, then, then I'm fine with, uh, cutting it out here and keeping it in a different section.
And Kevin, you, you also feel that it would be adequately covered in the other section, correct?
I believe so, yeah, I don't have it right in front of me, but I know we've done, or in depth on the, uh, facilities, 'cause that's where you were gonna go for the use of facilities or renting them out, so I, I would say we could eliminate this one altogether.
Okay.
Uh, it looks like Ms. Gailey has her, has her hand up, yeah, Ms. Gailey.
Dorothy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, so in Section K, right now, there's a real thing going on, it's with a building that on Porter Street, that's an old school building of ours, that we're figuring out how we can get rid of that building and, um, make some money from it so that we could get to our new buildings, would that be in Section K? Is that where all the rules and regulations are about if we had a former, um, building that we now have, like, we have a brand-new Thurgood Marshall, but the old Thurgood Marshall is still, still waiting to be decided what's gonna happen to it? Is that in Section K?
Uh, that, that's not the policies that I'm, uh, that, those aren't the policies I'm talking about, um. So, um, usually there is a policy, uh, somewhere, and Kevin, maybe you know where it is, about, um, surplus, about surplus property or surplus goods.
Chairman Nicholson?
Uh, yeah, um, Attorney Miles.
It's covered by sta- statute. Wouldn't be any regulations or, or policy. It's called abandonment of school property. I go to the school committee, it's dictated totally by statute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gailey and Attorney Miles for that answer, so, so I think it sounds like we're, we're all okay dragging this.
Admit this.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I'm okay with it.
Great, thank you.
So then next is, um, DG slash DH. Um, and, um, as long as everything in this is current practice, I don't see any reason to do anything different than is what here, than is what's in the policy.
Mr. Commissioner McHugh, can you speak to that?
Uh, yes, I believe everything there is accurately how, uh, we're handling it now, I don't see anything different.
Great.
Okay, there is just one thing I wanna point out, because it's gonna come up later, which this policy says that people who control the funds, I can't find it off the top of my head, um, will be bonded. Uh, so there's another policy that covers bonding, which I'm gonna say you don't need if you keep this one. So just remember that when I get to the other one.
Will do.
All right. So DGA Authorized Signatures, what you see on the screen is your authorized signature. Um, the only difference between this one and this one, the MASC version, is the sentence about, um, who is the designee for payroll, for signing payroll. Um, so I would suggest that probably having the MASC version that, um, specifically designates who signs the payroll might be the way to go here.
You need to change the verbiage, I think, right, to make it apply to us?
Yes, yes. Yes, it wouldn't say town treasurer, it would say city treasurer.
Uh, Mr. McHugh, does that, uh, accord with your sense of how this is done?
A- actually, uh, for the most part, yes, actually, um, uh, I actually signed the, the weekly, uh, payrolls, um, you know, it does say the chair of the school committee or designee, so I'm not sure if I've ever been their designee either, uh, since I've been here or prior to me, I'm not sure of a, a school person signing off on the weekly warrants, uh, that go off a payroll, but I do sign them here, so, uh, other than that, changing the, uh, the word, um, the city, instead of town treasurer, city treasurer would make sense.
Um, can I, can I chime in?
Yeah, Attorney, Attorney Satterwhite.
Thank you, so, eh, Kevin, my reading of this, it says that, uh, several, someone, um, from the school committee and someone from the superintendent's office or designee will sign the payrolls. I- 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 is it just one individual?
I, I sign them off, uh, when they get done every week and send them, you know, right now, everything, well, it's all electronic right now, is what happens. If you, you know, you really look at it, everything is done, we upload the, um, every, um, Monday morning, upload the payroll to, uh, through Munis to City Hall, and then it's processed as part of the batch. So typically on late Monday or Tuesday, I actually get the, uh, the copy that, that has a signature page, and I sign off and send it to the treasurer's office, uh, at that point. It's a hard signature, but the payroll, it's kind of already going, so, I mean, I, I, I know what this says, but I'm just, that's, that's how it works, and it's been working that way, so, I guess that would be another, you know, if we're gonna have someone from the school committee to do that with that, i- it's, they're still gonna get paid, 'cause otherwise, we would have to say, well, before we pay someone, we can't release that, and if we had have to Thursday, when the checks get released, to have someone else sign off on it.
Yeah, Attorney Miles.
But Kevin, the warrant's signed off by a representative of the school committee, correct?
Yes.
By statute.
Well, the, the non-salary, yes, the non- this is, uh, this is talking about payrolls, John, on, on the non-salary, uh, yes, we have, um, the, a, a designee for the monthly warrant, gets signed off for all, um, non-salary expenses, but as far as this says, we'll sign payrolls, you know, and payroll is done, is different.
Regular course, right.
Right.
So you don't have a payroll warrant that the school committee signs?
No.
I've never heard of that before.
Yeah. Actually, in my previous job, it, it wasn't signed off by the, um, and I worked in another district that the, school committee only signed off on all non-salary expenditures. They did not sign off on the payroll, because it's all done electronically, and even then, I, at that district, I never even signed anything. It would just get uploaded to City Hall or Town Hall, in that case was the town, and they would just process the payroll. Here, I actually do sign a document that's a hard copy of, uh, summation of all the lines, and that gets, uh, e- that gets, um, you know, uploaded, um, and emailed over to City Hall. Typically, it's on a Tuesday or so. So technically, before the payroll goes out to people.
That's out of the Department of Revenue, r- you know, regular course of business. You don't ask for warrants signed monthly by members of the school committee, as long as it's a salary, salary line item, in the framework of the line item of the, of the budget.
So, so Ms. Presser, what, what's the best practice that we should be following?
Well, so my under- and I, I will have to double check, because this is, um, uh, probably fine, um, but what my understanding is that, um, that someone on the school committee signs the payroll warrant, it's different than the regular warrant. There, what they're, the payroll essentially was approved in the approval of the budget. Um, but the, the, um, the payroll warrant is basically saying, yes, this is a payroll. So, yes, this is a payroll warrant, that, that complies with the budget. Um, I will double check and make sure that, that, uh, does not in the, um, it's probably fine, but I guess I would feel that maybe a double ch- another double check is in order?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against that, I mean, that would just mean someone would have to come in, or we'd have to have somebody come by, like, every Tuesday or so to sign off on the warrant, because it needs to be done prior to the, uh, dispersment of checks.
Yeah.
Um, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna object, but because, you know, so, or somebody else checking, that's proper. But the bottom line is, the Department of Revenue has made statements, that as long as you know how to record in the framework of line item of the existing budget, the school committee doesn't have to sign off no warrant, I would go on through that excruciatingly, the DOR, on numerous occasions, so, but check on it, that's fine.
Well, I would, I guess I would learn something, going forward for other, for other things too, if, if I, uh, I knew that was the case, so, uh, so it looks like the wording would be just simply, um, the superintendent or designee, would just, the sentence would just start, the superintendent or designee will sign payrolls presented for approval.
Yeah, um, excuse me, also Dorothy, I, I did sit on the local school committee for ten years, and, and that was, uh, back in, I started in nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand eight, and I don't recall ever any school committee person signed, though, the, uh,
Okay, okay.
You know, just to give you some more history as well, you know.
All right. So I, I'm gonna go back then to your, do you wanna just keep the, um, the version you have for authorized signatures?
Well, Ms. Presser, I mean, if you want, if you wanna look into it, it sounded like people were open to that, but, um, I guess that would be, the, it sounds like that would be Mr. McHugh and Attorney Miles, we feel comfortable.
Okay, so, so we'll count on keeping the, um, Lynn version.
Is, is everyone okay with that?
Can I have a, I have a quick question?
Yeah, Member Gailey.
On the warrants, I thought that we voted in, um, John Ford to sign the warrants over. Was every month, is that right, John?
Yes. That should be month, not every week.
Okay, all right, that's the difference, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, s- so it's just on, so it's, this covers just checks, not warrants?
Yeah, the, uh, mu- the monthly warrants, uh, non-salvy side, uh, Ms. Presser, are, are signed off by a school committee person every month.
And that's part of, that was part of the municipal simplization, I'm not using the right word, um, that, that it didn't, that it didn't require a forum of the committee, just one person could be authorized.
Right.
Right, that was a few years back that took place, I recall that.
Municipal modernization, that's what it was. Okay, okay, we ready to move to DH then?
Great.
And this is the one that I, um, do not believe that you need, because, uh, you actually covered it in your DG DH back a couple policies ago.
Get rid of, yeah, the five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Um, and then on the, um, DI Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, um, the only difference was, um, some legal references that are in MASC and not LINs, which are easy to add.
Great.
Add the references?
Yes, uh, it just, it's just the CMR, you have the, I believe you have the MGO reference.
Great.
Okay, and then on, um, DID, again, um, I think that there's, um, as long as, as long as this is current practice, I don't see any reason to change it. I did think there was somehow an extra word that was stuck in number two, uh, but that's easy to fix.
Yeah.
So, pardon?
I said, I was just seeing if anybody else had any comments on this. Go ahead, Ms. Presser.
Okay, so I'm just gonna remove the word affairs, so it just says Supervision of the School Business Administrator with Instructional and Non-Instructional Employees.
Yep.
Okay. So again, on DIE Audits, on the Lynn version, this is, this is the law verbatim, so I'm not sure you really need it. In the Lynn version, in the MASC version, um, I, uh, I don't know if you want to adopt anything from that or not.
I think the auditors out there would object to the, uh, title of the policy. It's an unfortunate combination. Um, yeah, I mean, I, we, the, the, previous practice has been not to take policies where we're just lifting the statute, because the statute changes and then our policy's out of date, um, which I think makes sense as an approach, do, do others have thoughts on that?
I agree, Attorney Nicholson.
Okay.
So do you want to adopt the MASC version?
Right.
Okay. Um, DJ, I, I'm not sure if the, the DJ version might have been shortened at some point, or this really isn't a policy.
Mr. McHugh, you have any need for this?
No, I, I think we follow the, uh, law, Mass General Law of Purchasing, and we actually follow the city procurement, uh, laws, 'cause they actually have a couple things that are a little more stricter than the, actually, the, uh, state procurement or federal procurement laws.
Does that, do we need to codify that as a policy, or, or are we okay with that, just as a practice?
Well, i- it's again, like I think you said, that, that changes, because recently, they just up some of the limits, and we kind of follow the, th- that as well. Uh, the only thing, uh, locally is the city has required, if a, we use a vendor, uh, one vendor, um, and they cumulatively go over ten thousand dollars, we're required to get three quotes, which is not under, uh, the stature of the, the state stature of the law, Mass General Law procurement laws, but that's the only difference which we do follow. But if they ever change that, that would be, uh, subject to be reviewed at that point.
Okay.
So Kevin, I'm putting DJE on the screen about bidding requirements, is that what you're talking about? Because it does talk about purchases that are
Yeah.
under the bidding requirements.
Yes, that first sentence is kind of, uh, it, the only, you know, it says over ten thousand dollars, uh, you know, it, ten thousand, it, the way they use it, though, is like, you, what I, what I'm saying, um, Ms. Presser, is like, if we use, um, ABC vendor, and I buy five thousand dollars' worth of, let's say, pencils, and then I go back six months later and I buy, you know, erasers for two thousand, and that puts me up to seven, then I buy four thousand dollars, I've now exceeded the ten thousand dollar for the additional per, uh, purchase, they would require us to get three quotes, even if it was only four thousand dollars, so that's an internal, but as long as if we can somehow maybe, you know, use that, 'cause I'm not sure that's crystal clear how that says that.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's, I don't see that explicitly stating it that way.
Okay, can I, I just wanna go back one second, um, because there is a, so this is the Lynn version of DJ, which we're deciding really doesn't have a place. Um, and then this talks about purchasing, um, this is the MASC version. Um, and I don't know whether you feel this is necessary, Kevin, or whether you feel that it's covered in the, the other policy.
I, I think that I choose the, uh, the, uh, MASC version, uh, it's pretty clear. You know, if you wanna keep that in there, I, I have no, I think that's fine.
I, I think the, the one thing in here that I think is important is, um, purchases only being made on official purchase orders.
And that we do follow that anyway, so that's we have a system for that.
Yep, okay, so, um, I'm hearing leave this in place.
Drop, drop the Lynn version, but use the MASC.
Yes, yes, right, yes.
Yes, I would agree.
Um, and then in the, the DJA, there, this is, there's only an MASC version, I'm really not sure how, uh, important it is to adopt, 'cause I think it really is covered essentially under the other policies.
Yeah, it's kind of just restating it.
Yeah, 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 so I think that you don't really need this. Agreed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, anybody else, okay?
Now, this is the one, um, we get back to the discussion about, um, Kevin, do you think it would be good to put something in here about cumulative purchases over the course of the fiscal year?
Well, I, that's the current practice, if we were gonna follow the current practice, I think we should state that, and that's, you know, uh, that's an internal city, unique to City of Lynn, so, I mean, you know, we don't say that explicitly, so, I mean, if we're gonna try to, you know, line this up, I think we should probably put that in.
Is, is this one maybe, Ms. Presser, you could, you could draft with Kevin?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
And, and do any other members have any thoughts on that in terms of just codifying the current practice?
I think you just gotta put you in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I think i- if it's the practice, I think it's, it's a good idea, 'cause it is sort of a nuance, and I think having it clearly stated in policy is good guidance.
Right, and I can also reach out to the city purchasing agent, he might have a sentence that we could utilize, since he's the one that would, uh, also be involved with.
Okay.
Uh, can I just ask a question, Kevin?
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
Thank you, is the reason why we do that, so people just don't continue to get under ten thousand dollar bids over and over again and not have to?
Uh, I, I don't know, that's been the practice since I've been here, but I would think something like that, that people, you know, what happens is, that, that it's across the city, so it's not even just the school department, so, uh, if the fire department used the same bidder, you know, we use the same bidder, so it does, it actually is a little, can be a little difficult, but I think they're just trying to ensure that mo- a lot of people aren't just going to one bidder and just, you know, putting all the, uh, you know, the business with one person.
I like that, okay, yep, yep.
All right, so it spreads, it spreads the wealth around, I guess, would be a nice way of saying.
Okay. So, um, the, so you go by ten thousand, you haven't upped it to the fifty thousand? So, the, so you go by ten thousand, you haven't upped it to the fifty thousand for competitive bids?
For competitive, yes, they have, they follow the state law, other than the cumulative ten thousand is what they've done for the fifty, because I did make a note on mine, I did, I'm looking at it now, I did cross out the ten and put fifty there.
Okay, well, you and I can go do that offline and we can bring it back next time then.
Yep.
Okay. DJG, before I get too tongue-twisted here, this is a policy, this is only in the LIN policy manual. So it's really up to if you want to keep it or not.
I think this is what you learn in ethics.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is overlaps with the ethics rules, right?
The ethics rule actually allow a gift of up to fifty dollars in the fiscal year, as opposed to no gift.
I'd rather the stricter rule, to be honest with you, Derek, Attorney Nicholson.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it, Mr. Ford, did you have any?
I'm good with keeping it as well.
Okay.
I'm good with it too.
Thank you, Ms. Galley.
Just a quick question, Attorney Nicholson?
Yes.
Kevin or Dr. Todd Wyler, do we ever use a consultant or a non-employee to work with vendors that could be excluded from this policy?
Work with, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, work with a consultant to do what?
To work with vendors, or do vendor management, or someone that's technically not a person, because the the policy says employees, I don't want there to be any issues, because sometimes you use consultants to do certain things. If one's working with a vendor, I would hope that that rule still applies them. And it could be dismissal can be read as that their contract is terminated, not necessarily fired.
I don't recall, I don't recall ever using a consultant to go out and do any purchasing, all the purchasing would be required to still come through us, through the purchase law system, then get final approval at City Hall. I've been here thirteen years, I don't ever recall another vendor doing purchasing on our behalf. We obtained all the quotes and processed them that way.
Okay.
Okay, so for DK, there are two versions, this is the LIN version. And this is the MASC version, it does provide a little bit more detail about the process, and I think, you know, this to me is really your preference about which one you'd want to go for, and perhaps the one that Kevin would recommend.
Mr. McQ, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I would recommend the MASC.
Any other comments on this?
Just a quick one. The school building administrators, is, I'm assuming that's principals?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to reword that, we can still use that and we understand what that means?
You could, because I mean, whoever's responsible for a building, you know, like here would be the superintendent, because this would be a building as well, or if we ever, I mean, you know, moved another, let's say, you know, there's been talk, like, you know, hypothetically, we moved the welcoming center some way to a building by itself, it would be the administrator of that building as well, building administrator.
Perfect, okay.
I would suggest that this actually is not a policy, this DKA payment schedules.
I would agree.
And it can be taken out? Or ripped up, okay. On DKB, salary deduction payroll procedures, we've been sort of saying if they're procedures, they would come out of the policy manual and go into the appropriate, like, staff handbook or whatever, which would be my recommendation here.
Yeah, that sounds right to me, any other thoughts?
My only thing is,
Go ahead, Attorney Sadaway.
Thank you, with, you know, the Supreme Court came down with that ruling about the union dues, and if we take this out, is that not something that is gonna be allowed in the future, like, I look at every word, and I want to make sure that we're not messing up something.
So, you know, I looked at that thinking if this was translated, like, verbatim into a staff manual, the fact that you have must be, or in parentheses, or maybe, I think covers you because I believe the Janus decision actually allows, with the permission of the employee, you can still charge that agency fee.
So, Attorney Miles, you don't, taking this out's not gonna change any of that stuff, right?
Well, I agree with Ms. Presser.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. And then the last policy in the section, again, I would say that the LIN version is not actually a policy. The MASC version does talk about reimbursements, and if it fits with practice, then I would recommend adopting it, if there's a different practice, then that would be something we'd want to look at.
Mr. McQ?
I would recommend we adopt the MASC, because that's actually what we do, that's how we follow, that policy is accurate.
And Attorney Miles, I believe the second paragraph is what we've been doing with all of our contracts.
Any other comments on this one? Great.
Okay, that brings us to the end of Section D.
Great, thank you, Mr. McQ and Ms. Presser for the progress there. Ms. Chules, is that, are we, should we now go to, I know Attorney Gallow wanted to do, gonna show the discipline codes that the manuals could be printed, is that?
Yes, Mr. Gallow's next.
Great, great, so yeah, so Attorney Gallow is coming back to us, he met with Attorney Miles about the question, open question that we had from last time, and then you'll also remember that we had started talking about the dress code as an area we wanted to address, and requested the solicitation of input on that from students from educators and other districts, and Attorney Gallow will share the process that they went through there to do that. So Attorney Gallow, please.
Thank you, Attorney Nicholson, so I was here in, so the first part of this is the discipline code, and I think this should be pretty brief. I was here in October and November and worked closely with Ms. Presser on some revisions to the discipline code here last month on a nearly final draft, that I think there was consensus pretty much on this subcommittee about adopting, with one exception, and that was the newly proposed Section 6.8. The issue that exists is that the statute thirty-seven H, and thirty-seven H and the existing discipline code only allow for discipline when a student does something to staff that rises to the level of assault or assault and battery. And so trying to do something less than that, covering offenses less than that. What you'll see here are, I sort of did a multicolored thing for you tonight, and the blue language was what I proposed last time. I think that it was maybe a little bit too broad, and so I have three other options for you, options one and two are both narrowing, but they include not just physical, but also mental or emotional harm. And then option three is even more restrictive, it eliminates the emotional harm piece, I'm hopeful frankly that option one or two will please the committee, and I was lucky to walk with Attorney Miles on this, and I believe Attorney Miles that all three options were fine by you.
Great, thank you Attorney Gallow, and then Attorney Miles, please feel free to chime in if you wanted to add anything to that.
I'm mute, just so you know.
Okay. John Miles, you're on mute if you're trying to say anything.
Well, I agree with what Attorney Gallow said.
Okay.
We met, we're over the language, and it's up to you people who adopt the language you like.
Okay. Uh, yeah, Attorney Sadaway?
I prefer option two. I like it, it gets to the point, and it's, I think it's the best choice out of the three.
I like option two as well.
Mr. Ford, yeah, okay, I was gonna say the same thing, I think the unwanted or inappropriate is just a little bit clearer than the endangering, and I think accomplishes what we wanted to, making sure that we address those kinds of situations that come up. And I assume that Dr. Todd Wyler is what works for you as well, okay. Any other?
One thing?
Yeah, Ms. Galley.
Why do we cut out pupils?
So if I could on that, through Chairman Nicholson, Ms. Galley, thank you, so my next point was gonna be just consistency, we should separate out staff and pupils, and if choosing option two or one, sounds like it'll be two, we should, for further consistency, also add in the emotional harm piece as we talk about pupils in 6.3. So that was really about formatting and grammar, and Ms. Galley showing your colors as a teacher for sure and picking that up.
Okay, but I will go into also then.
Great, I think we have consensus then, thank you.
And so I didn't prepare, I certainly could if you wanted me to, go through the rest of the policy, but my hope was, you know, if this committee might consider sending the full discipline code for approval at some point, that would be helpful so that we can then include that in the annual handbook for next year. The discipline code appears both in the manual, but also in the handbook, and the handbook is published annually.
Just a quick question on that, so does that, does the dress code include the discipline code, then we would do a separate vote for that?
So there are two separate policy documents, so I would think it would be two separate votes, and of course, defer to Attorney Miles if he has any thoughts on that.
Well, I agree with you.
Okay. So I guess we could, if, a motion to approve this discipline code and to send to the full committee would be in order.
So moved.
Mr. Ford, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Chairman Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Sadaway?
Yes. Great, thank you. Attorney Gallow?
Thank you very much, so I'm excited tonight to talk about the dress code and electronic device policy. And I want to first talk a little bit about the comprehensive process that we went through to get to the proposal that shortly I'll sort of unveil here. Between, so this is my best, sort of a graphic chart of our process, and from late December to early February, we solicited input on the discipline code and also the dress code. We did that through an online survey that was bilingual, English and Spanish. There were open-ended and closed-ended questions, and we asked for our respondents to look at these issues through the lenses of, through an equity lens, thinking about fairness, thinking about sensitivity towards race, culture, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, those kinds of considerations. We had five hundred respondents, three hundred plus of those were high school students, one hundred and fifty approximately were staff members, and the remainder of them were parents of high school students. A sizable minority, forty-five percent, said that the dress code was somehow unfair or inequitable or insensitive, and over one hundred respondents offered open-ended comment, you know, feedback to inform the revision to the dress code. That brings us to what we did in February and early March, was that we did, using that feedback, some initial drafting. The initial drafting was done with Ms. Presser, and she had input from one of her colleagues who has some expertise or experience through her work in other districts as to dress codes. We looked at some of our neighbors' districts, districts that were close geographically to us, and also some districts further from home, particularly Seattle, Washington, and Roanoke, Virginia. March, we released that initial draft for feedback to principals at all levels, and also to the inclusivity panels of students at the middle and high school levels, for them to look at, again, through that equity lens. Thereafter, we did a listening session with feedback on those, on the initial draft, and then further revisions this month, and that brings us to where we are today. I know process is, you know, very important, as it should be to the members tonight, and so I just wanted to go through that process, and I'll get to the substantive dress code next, unless there are any questions about the process, I'm happy to pause for those.
I don't see any.
So, right off the bat, we have two problems with the dress code. The first problem is that there's a version in the policy manual at file JICA, and there's a version that lives in the annual handbook. And they are similar, but they're not exact. Depending on which version you read, flip-flops may or may not be allowed. Depending on which version you read, pajamas may or may not be allowed. So that's, the first problem is that we have two different versions floating around. The second problem I would submit is that the dress code includes within it the electronic device policy. I would submit that it makes sense to separate that out as its own policy, I don't know that the two are closely related even, so those are kind of off-the-back issues. More substantively, though, is that, and this is based on the feedback that we got, there are requirements around good hygiene and cleanliness, that perhaps are problematic if we think about things through a socioeconomic lens, think about homelessness, those kinds of issues. There are requirements around hairstyle, and there are also specific prohibitions on items like durags and wave caps that may impact one race more than any other. I would submit to you that if we don't want head coverings, we should simply say we don't want head coverings, not single out items that may impact disproportionately certain races of individuals. And by the way, if we are going to be saying we don't want head coverings, I would urge the committee to include exceptions, particularly a religious exception, we should allow religious head coverings, and also a medical exception, in case there is some kind of a medical head covering. Again, this is based on the feedback from mostly students, but also staff and parents. Beyond that, in Section Two here, we have prohibitions on a number of items that are traditionally female items of clothing, and we got some feedback that certainly said females, by this kind of language, you know, felt shamed. That we don't treat male students in the same way, and that we should be, you know, doing our rules and prohibitions on a more neutral way in terms of sex, gender, and gender identity. So that's the backdrop for the revisions. I'm using the manual version just because it's a little easier to read, but just so you see, there's a separate handbook version as well. This, though, is the new, proposed new student dress code. And the big picture approach is that we start with a preface, and I'll read the preface. It's familiar language as to other prefaces I've shared with you, but I think this sets the tone. The student dress code has been adopted by the LIN School Committee in order to promote an appropriate standard of dress in the LIN public schools, while also balancing the rights of students. The dress code should be administered fairly and equitably. Application of the dress code should be made by the principal or principal's designee, taking into account the core values of the LIN public schools as they may relate to dress. Dress code violations may result in the student having to change, cover, or remove attire. Violations also may be subject to the discipline code. The degree, frequency, and circumstances surrounding any violation should impact the methods used in enforcement. Disciplinary action shall be progressively applied. So I think we're starting out really with our values, and I'll get into the substance of it, I want to, though, pause, if there are any questions so far, I'm happy to pause for a moment. Looking good, all right. Big picture again, the next thing we do is we start with a positive approach. A- and, and this is not my idea, this is something we see in other districts and, and um, each student must wear the following. So rather than the laundry list of prohibitions, we're saying you need to wear a shirt or clothing top that covers, you know, things that should be covered um, under the dress code. Pants, shorts, or dresses of a certain length, and wear unless it's prohibited below. Then, stealing a page from our friends in Roanoke, Virginia, we have a visual um, to show what's covered. It's a bilingual visual. Um, I would not on my best day be capable of doing this kind of a visual, so I wanna give some credit to our own Patty Klobansky for, for uh, working with me to make this. We then get into the prohibitions. Students may not wear the following, and I'll just put them on the screen. And um, I, I won't um, read A through P, but I'll be just pause a minute, and I'm happy to answer any questions or explain any, or, or go through any, um, that you, you wanna talk about.
Could you zoom in a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah.
Charlie, on the first one, A, it says face coverings. Right now, everybody has to wear masks.
Yes, so we have face coverings, except for medical purpose. Unless for a medical purpose, exactly right.
Great, great, I didn't mean the end of the line.
No, you're good, Ms. Gately.
That would be the first question the kids say too.
These are all the prohibitions I've centered on the screen. Hopefully folks can uh, see that, see them all at that Zoom level. As we read this, and I said this in our listening session, I don't think we're ever gonna get to a point where everybody in the school district, or even everybody on this Zoom, one hundred percent agrees with every provision of the dress code. Um, n- n- no two are identical, certainly we can say, but um, big picture, we're just trying to really incorporate our values, do this in the most fair and equitable way that, that we can. Certainly, there need to be rules, but, but, you know, it's, I think the, the art here is how we, we um, we do that.
Chairman Nicholson? Yeah, attorney Satterwhite. Um, would you say that uh, uh, O and G are, are pretty much similar or the same? One, one encompasses the other?
Let's see, O was the danger to students or school personnel, or damage to school property, and G was spike studs changed. Yeah, I suppose. I'm sure we'll make tweaks, and I certainly be happy to combine those. It's a good point. Attorney, as Satterwhite.
And I know flip flops are gonna be the, the one that gets most, most kids. Flip flops are during summer. Um, it's gonna be a tough one.
So that exists in the current handbook version, a- and maybe I, so um, I don't know if one of the, the members of the administration could, could maybe talk and, and say whether or not that is enforced or not, I, um, or the level of enforcement on that, but that does exist now in the handbook version.
It could be for safety reasons.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. It's safety reasons. Um, as a principal, very often, we would ask students not to wear sandals or flip flops due to stairways and fear of them getting caught and falling. Um, the biggest struggle, however, is um, some staff wear sandals and flip flops, and students see it as a contradiction. And so I think that's why they struggle, students struggle with it so much. Um, so I think that's something that we're gonna need to talk about, because it's really not fair to say to students, you can't wear them, but others can.
And ju- just to clarify, the, the, we're saying that they can't wear flip flops, not necessarily that they couldn't wear sandals, is that correct?
Sandals, uh, that, that go, have straps like around the ankle, around the foot, that the foot is secure is fine.
Right.
Um, it's more the sandals that they slip their foot in and are kind of looser.
Yeah.
Um, that is more dangerous when you're on the stairways.
Potentially, that's, that's a conversation you could have with staff then, if it's um, just for the flip flops.
Yeah, I always did. Charlie.
Yeah, Ms. Gately.
Letter D. I am wearing so tickle pink spandex or other skin tight bottoms, unless worn with a top that is mid thigh length. Those kids are gonna be so thrilled because they, you know, like, can't wear sweatpants for the girls, you can't wear these spandex, but with a, a long top, that's acceptable. I, I'm like happy with that change, aren't you, Deb?
I'm actually the one who suggested that change.
Really good.
Leggings, I feel like e- every girl I know wears leggings.
Every girl, and it's just a matter of making sure that, you know, they are covered to, to the right extent. Yep.
Through, through this process and having such support and um, and, and, and partnership and supervision um, from, from Deputy Superintendent Regiro, um, I learned what a tunic is, and uh, so subparagraph D, Ms. Gately, that is, that is the result of, of uh, Deb's brainchild on that.
I still don't know what a tunic top is, so.
It's just a long top, Michael. It's just a long top.
Any other questions for? Ms. West?
A- and Attorney Nicholson, uh, one of the things that I, I, I do like about it too, and I think it's, it's a middle ground is N. Um, because that, that was a style for a lot of period of time where you can have ripped, you know, ripped clothing. Where being specific here, that hey, you can have it, but it can't expose your undergarment or um, you know, show certain things that it shouldn't be. So, I, I like it. A- a- again, w- I think we're taking a step forward in, in, in um, in, 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 in actually listening, in, 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 you know, given, given, uh, you know, creed to uh, to the voices of our, our staff and parents and students, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, and, and so the point um, with attorney Satterwhite that you're making on that one, all the credit in the world um, to Glenda Cologne on, on that one. Um, she, um, she wrote that last um, last phrase, so truly, this was a collaborative process, and, and um, a lot of people um, should get some, some credit um, on this list, that.
Pay a lot of money for those ripped jeans.
I was just gonna say, it's another example of clothing, right? It's another example of clothing that kids go to buy clothes, and that's what's out there.
My granddaughter told me when she paid for a pair that I thought was, looked like she was taking them out of the trash can.
A hundred dollars those cost. It's, it's nuts.
Give me an old pair and I'll design them.
You want some paint on it too?
So, so additionally, not forgetting about our um, friends at L V T I, there's a wider exception in number three, um, which provides for um, you know, rules can be made around dress code for specialized classes. That's aimed at, at both tech, a- and also it's aimed at gym classes. Um, our friend Sue Garrity, um, Principal of the Sewell Anderson School w- w- spoke to, to the issue that they have with, with students not bringing gym attire as well. Um, I looked at one of our neighboring towns, actually, Sawgus, that had some good language there. So what you see on three is, is some variation of um, conversations at that elementary level, high school level, and looking at um, other districts, so. Um, that is the dress code. I'm happy to do any of other further questions on it, and, and then um, the electronic device is my sort of last part tonight, and, and that may indeed take the most time. I don't, I uh, that's, that's one y'all for sure, I'm sure wanna look at.
I, I don't, no, I don't, I don't see any other questions to ask, right? I mean, I'll just say that, I, I thank you as well, uh, Attorney Gallo and, and the team that worked on this, and, and I know uh, M A C reviewed as well, um, and brought some perspective from uh, working in other districts, working in other similar districts, um, and I think that's, you know, like you said at the beginning, that process is so important, and, and, and looking at best practices, and also really uh, genuinely engaging with the, the input and feedback from students. Um, and I think you were able to do that in a couple ways with the survey, and then what, it's such a great use of the inclusivity panels, um, to be able to uh, use that i- as part of the, the policymaking process to give our students a voice and to take advantage of that infrastructure that, that also becomes a meaningful experience for them, so, so I'm glad that worked out.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, so, the, the sort of last piece I have tonight is the electronic device policy. We have two versions of the electronic device policy now. Let me see if I can zoom it as big as we, as can be here. The current manual version of the electronic device policy lives within the dress code, and it bans all electronic devices between seven and four P M on school grounds. That's the current manual version, and it's, I would say, pretty draconian in, in two thousand twenty-one. The current handbook version, immediately in the handbook follows the dress code, so it's sort of part of the dress code at the end as opposed to a plop in the middle, um, which is a little bit better, but again, I'm hoping we can separate it out as its own policy. Um, that is a little less draconian. It says, non-electronic devices, so that's a, a first difference. Um, are prohibited during school hours. So, they couldn't be used on school grounds outside of school hours to call home for a ride or something like that. I'll tell you that our feedback, not just students but staff too, was that this was still too restrictive. And so I have proposed new language, it's short enough that I'll just read it, but use of not, this is the proposed new, um, hopefully separate um, electronic device policy. Use of non-educational electronic devices, included but not limited to cell phones, is generally prohibited during school hours. Non-educational electronic devices must remain out of sight and off during school hours. Violation of this policy may result in confiscation of the item or parental notification. Violations may be subject to the discipline code. Once again, degree, frequency, and circumstances surrounding any violation should impact methods of enforcement. Disciplinary action shall be progressively applied. And then an exception. An exception to this policy may, may be made by the principal or teacher to allow for the responsible use of electronic devices such as cell phones at appropriate times during school hours. So we're trying to um, strike a balance. We're definitely loosening what we have now. We're providing an exception to allow for responsible use of electronic devices at appropriate times in the discretion of the educator. Um, so, so I'm happy to, to take any questions, but um, that, those are sort of manual version, handbook version, and proposed new, a- and what I'm hopeful for, um, a- and it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but, but again, um, these will both be in the uh, handbook that's published um, annually. So, so my hope is that, you know, in, in the not-too-distant future, hopefully, we can advance these as well to the full committee so that we can get them in place, you know, for next year, um, if the subcommittee is supportive, so.
Great, thank you, Attorney Gallo. I see attorney Satterwhite.
All right, uh, so, wh- when I read the last paragraph, um, I have concerns. Um, I don't wanna have it where, um, a, a teacher might just allow one student to, to use their phone in class, and, and uh, discipline everyone else that tries to, to also do it. So i- is there wording that we can add in there that doesn't allow that to happen? Um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, obviously, like I do when I'm looking at contracts, what words can I uh, put in there to, to, to have that not be an issue? Attorney Miles, can you think of anything?
How about medical? If it's a medical reason, they are allowed to use it.
I, I, I don't know if it, uh, I, I think that that, um, i- i- if, I don't even see that as an exemption either, that if there's a medical reason. Um, so, I, I, I guess that's something that we can, we could uh, talk about too. Deb, did you have a response?
Yeah, can I just share some of the feedback we got, why this exception section went in, uh, was asked to be put in? Um, schools, especially at the secondary level, um, teachers use it in, u- u- allow students to use their cellphone in the classroom during instruction for like, um, to eat, to answer a survey that they're, you know, on content that they're doing. It's almost like a formative assessment. Um, during lunchtime, they're allowed to listen to music while they're eating lunch. Um, at the elementary level is before school and after school, when they're calling their parent that I made it to school safely, or I just got out, I'm, I'm walking home right now. So, i- it really was more about the, these times that schools use them already. But this now allows it to be used. The way the wording was before, it really shouldn't have been happening.
Yeah, so, uh, attorney Satterwhite.
Um, I'd be okay if, um, i- you know, if it was just docketed some, somewhere, documented somewhere that, um, you know, i- if a teacher or a principal allowed for it to happen, i- it just put somewhere, so in case a student is, is reprimanded during that timeframe, um, for, for utilizing a cellphone, that that's, that's documented somewhere for, for them to, for at least somewhere in the higher up uh, to, to, to look at or review. I, I, I'm just, I, I, you know, obviously the paragraph before, um, I, I like the language that you're adding in there, attorney um, Gallo, about the degree and frequency circumstances, wh- whatnot. Um, I just, you know, I, I was a student once. I know that, um, uh, you know, sometimes uh, 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 y- you're in a situation where you're just not, you know, receiving the, the equal, um, uh, uh, opportunity to, to, to do what other, another student is doing. Um, and sometimes it could be, um, you know, obviously, w- without ill, i- intent, but I, I still just wanna make sure that, um, if a principal says, um, hey, you know, you can use the phone during, you know, changing of your classes or whatever, um, that, that we know about it, that's it. Um, if you're fine with the, I'm just one, obviously, if, if Jared and, and, and John are fine with the, the third paragraph the way it is, then it will live that way.
What if, what if, oh, go ahead. Yeah, I, I just, um, I think, attorney Satterwhite, I, I had a comment as well, I think it was related. Um, 'cause I, you know, I, part of this is just figuring out the right way to, I think we're, we have similar goals in terms of what we want the, the policy to do. Um, I wonder if in the beginning, that first sentence, where are we, are we interested in preventing the use of non-educational electronic devices or the non-educational use of electronic devices? Um, like Ms. Regir said, i- if people are using their phone in class, then that's an educational use. Um, and maybe that's a way to um, uh, sort of uh, target the, the, the behavior that we wanna target and allow the behavior that we wanna allow. Um, and I would similarly could go, i- if you included medical i- in that as well, I think that could address Ms. Gately's point, so. Um, by, by tar- by uh, allowing and d- or disallowing the type of use of electronic devices as opposed to the actual device, because a, a computer can be used also for inappropriate uses, right? Um, and, and a phone can be used for appropriate uses. Um, so that one, that might be one way to address that, and then, and then attorney Satterwhite, may, and maybe there's a way, um, either a phrase about how this should be equi- equitably applied, or, or um, is there, is there, is there a way to say that this isn't, this isn't meant to be a case-by-case, individual-by-individual exception? This is meant to be like, a- as applied to a class, or as applied to a grade, or as applied to a, yeah. So we could.
Nice feed.
Attorney Gately.
Um, so, my point with the medical was, um, back in the day, probably during the, um, current handbook versions of the discipline code, if a student took a cellphone out to look at their, the time, 'cause the clock in the room was broken, I was forced to send them out, and then they would get detention. So, um, if you didn't catch it, it could appear to some students that I was allowing them to get away with it. Um, this exception could be explained as simply as what Deb said. What students, you know, before and after school to let their parents know, um, during a class, if they, just put it down there. Just write it, so that it's clarified, what is the exception? The exception is if it's used in a class with the teacher knowingly allowing them to use it. Like as a calculator, a lot of students use. allowing them to use it, like as a calculator, a lot of students use those phones for calculators that they don't have a calculator. That's all. That's what I was thinking. And Michael, you're absolutely right, because back in the day, they used to like, it was brutal. I mean, it was brutal to have to kick a kid out because they took the phone out to look at the time, knowing that they were going to get suspended on detention. I just hated that rule. So.
Well, I will tell you, starting Monday, the 12th, middle school and high school, they'll all have them out because they're using Q R codes to track students and staff in spaces. So as the student goes in a classroom, they use it, they're scanning a Q R code on their phones if they have a phone, and it automatically goes to a database saying they were in room whatever from this time to this time. So, you know, we are using techno. I like your idea, Jared, because it really isn't about the device. It's about how we use it.
Yep.
Great. So I think then that we could probably do a couple of tweaks here to in the first paragraph to Attorney Nicholson's point, flip it from electronic devices to noneducational use. To Attorney Satterwhite's point, in the second paragraph, or the third paragraph, excuse me, we could speak to not just allow responsible use, but allow responsible use by the class. So it's equitable. It's not individualized. And then to Ms. Gateley's point, we could easily tag on a little medical exception at the end as well. So those are three tweaks that can certainly be made, you know, quickly and easily for consideration.
Attorney Gallo, I would, I would for the I loved your proposal, but we do mention principals and teachers. So I would say for the responsible use of electronic devices by this school or class.
Sure.
If because we were given both of these leaders the ability. And I'm fine with that. Yes, that's perfect. Thank you.
Great. Any other, any other comments on this or questions?
And I don't know, Chairman Nicholson, if you want me to come back to present again or to send it for amendment, but I'm happy to do whatever the wish of you and the subcommittee is on that.
So I wonder if we could, and I'm open to thoughts from the committee. I mean, we already sent the discipline code. I it sounds like we're on track to send the dress code. We could advance this to the full committee and so we could review the changes altogether because it's going to go to the full committee anyway, just to save save a step in the process of the subcommittee having to review it again. I'm open to people's thoughts on that.
Attorney Nicholson.
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
In the past, we've done this, even with contracts, we were just going to change a word or two. We put it in the hands of Attorney Myhouse to make those changes. I mean, it was documented in the minutes. So but that, you know, helped us in that area. So if Dabo Mary has the responses as to what we're changing with regards to the proposed new electronic device policy, I'm fine with voting to advance it to the committee, full committee, subject to the changes that we discussed.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already got four people in concurrence.
Right.
And Attorney Satterwhite, I haven't lost track of your combining O and G as well. That will be one of the dress code. That will be probably the only tweak I'll make to the dress code before it advances, but I have that down as well.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Just real quickly on the on the O thing, is it worth adding not just danger to other students, but could, are there any concern that people would be dangerous to themselves depending on what they that is the only thing I thought about the spikes and the studs if maybe it's not even just other people?
Would any students?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
No problem. I'll have that as well.
Okay. And are there any other questions or comments from the members on this? So that I think then a motion to advance the dress code and the electronic device policy with the changes discussed would be in order.
So moved.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Chairman Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's to go to the full committee.
Correct. Yep.
Great. So I think now we are planning to continue through the alphabet and hand it back over to Ms. Presser. Is that right, Ms. Jules? Great.
Okay, so let me just.
Yes, sorry.
Let me just rearrange my screen again. So I believe that our intention was to go to F, skipping over E.
While you're while you're getting your screen up, I'll just also thank Attorney Gallo again. And you're welcome to stay, but.
No, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate all the input and feedback and help.
Yeah, no, we do. Like I said earlier, I think this process was this is an important policy that I know my colleagues and I have gotten a lot of important feedback on and really hits on a lot of the goals that we have as a district about listening and inclusivity. And so thanks for for your work on that and for all the students who participated in the survey, in the inclusivity panels, the educators, the parents, and my colleagues for the thoughtful approach here. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
They're going to be so happy with this. Much, much happier.
Sorry, Ms. Presser. Go ahead.
That's okay. You ready for F?
Yeah.
So F is a fairly short section. And part of our logic here in jumping to F was that in many of the other sections, like working the discipline code with Attorney Gallo and like working through the fiscal section with Mr. McHugh, it was really helpful to talk with the appropriate administrator before we went ahead and brought things to you. Your administrators right now are extremely busy. So waiting until they had a little bit more downtime to do this made sense. But because section F really involves more the school committee than any administrator, it seemed that it was okay to go ahead and have us look at that one tonight. So that's why we skipped over E. We haven't forgotten about it. We'll go back to it at the appropriate time. So the first policy in section F is facilities development goals. There is a LIN version, which is in front of you. And there is an M A S C version. This is really more, I guess, one's viewpoint as opposed to anything else. The M A S C version is fairly recent, talks about taking advantage of the MSBA should any facility work need to be done. And I think also just seems a little more bit more current because it talks about designing facilities really more with the education in mind. And I felt like the LIN version focused a little bit more on the the number of students as opposed to the the education that the facilities were delivering. So that that was my take on it, but certainly we can be open to discussion on that.
I just want to check real quick. Is Attorney Myhouse still with us? Yeah, okay. I saw him. I couldn't see him on the list, but now I see him. Now I see him. Okay, sorry. Does anybody have comments on the difference?
M A S C.
Yeah.
The one thing I did see in the LIN version, which we could incorporate in the M A S C, which I thought was kind of a nice thing to have there, was whenever possible, the cultural as well as the educational needs of the community will be considered. So to me, that meant thinking about sort of that community use of the facilities, if you could incorporate that into your planning.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I like.
So we could, we could. Yeah, we could take that sentence and find the appropriate place to to put it would probably be after the first sentence in the second paragraph here. So the goals of the facilities and then the community use, and then to best use local resources whenever possible, use the MSBA.
Yep.
Okay. Just making sure I have good notes to go back and make the changes.
Thank you.
So F A dash E was as facility development goals. We actually removed this from the M A S C manual as being somewhat redundant. The C M Rs that are referred to are access to equal educational opportunity and active efforts, which are covered in other in other policies that you have around protected classes and so forth.
And I think it's Attorney Nicholson.
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
And I think, again, it's really quoting a state policy or law, and we're trying to avoid that. But they're good goals, but they're also not just goals. They're C M Rs, so.
Yep. I I'm fine with that. Mr. Ford, did you have something else?
We're moving.
Okay, great.
So for F B, facilities planning, there is no M A S C version of this policy. It's just a LIN version. But I don't if it fits your practice and you want to keep it, there's no reason not to. The only thing I questioned was the purpose of the asterisks in the policy. I wasn't sure why they were there.
I think it has to do with, oh, you're right. No, because it's after four and then there.
And then up in the, yeah, up in the first paragraph.
This was before our time, Attorney Ford.
Mr. John.
Instead of promotion.
Did are there typically school building committees when we're looking to build?
Yeah, we did. We did that on Marshall. We, you know, we had a committee. We interviewed architects and construction managers. That was done by a committee of the committee. So we did do that. I think it's a valuable process. I'd like to keep it.
Yeah, and Attorney Myhouse can jump in here, but I believe if you are going to.
The asterisks, I don't know what they imply.
Yeah. But if if you are going to have a school building, the city would have a school building committee. That would actually be, I believe, in a town, it would be under the selectmen. So I'm assuming in the city, it would be under a city council. That a school a school building committee would be established by statute.
When we did it for Marshall, we had a school committee.
Subcommittee.
Yes, three members.
Yep. So we're going to keep this, but get rid of the asterisks.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Any other comment?
I'm making sure everything makes sense. One second. I know this isn't a pressin' thing, but Dorothy, do you do you normally capitalize superintendent or do you believe it lowercase?
We if it's the specific superintendent that we're talking about, yes, we capitalize superintendent. If we're talking about a superintendent, we don't capitalize it. If we're talking about the superintendent, we do.
So here it's lowercase, the superintendent in the school committee. You know, it's again, it's a minute or minor.
I can certainly take care of that edit.
And other than that, I'm fine with keeping it Attorney.
Great.
Can you just tell me where you see it? So I.
Paragraph two in the subsection.
Oh, got it. Got it. Thank you. Okay. So the next one is F C B, retirement of facilities. Again, there are two versions here that actually the LIN version provides more direction than the M A S C version. But if you feel comfortable with that, there's no reason not to keep that. Tell me which way you want me to scroll. That would be helpful. Go back to the LIN version.
Can you scroll through the top on the LIN?
Yep. Yep. It's it's generally, it's more explicit in the in the considerations.
And I believe your version, Attorney Nicholson, sorry.
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
Puts the onus on the superintendent to provide to the school committee. The superintendent will recommend to the school committee which facility to justify. That's going to be easy for Dr. Todd Wilder. We have many that justify the retirement. But I'm not is that how it typically is? Or is it city? Because I know that the mayor put the school buildings in his his plan for city buildings.
It could be the way of the future. It hasn't been that way. That the, in fact, when we went to when Marshall was being built, the only people who went to the MSBA was Kathy Latham, myself, and Mike Donovan. Evidently, Mayor McGee has got a very different approach that may change. I don't know. But it was never that way before.
Attorney Myhouse, did you did you on the policy language, did you have any comments?
I would stick with ours. I think it's more inclusive.
Okay.
That's just my recommendation.
I mean, to me, yours gives you more guidance in how you're going to make the considerations.
And it's also not limiting, right? It's just.
Oh, no. No.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Attorney Satterwhite?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, great.
So the next policy is naming of new facilities. Interestingly enough, in general, what we find is the M A S C version is shorter. In this case, your version is shorter than the M A S C version, and seems a little bit more process oriented. So I would say that if you are content with your version or don't see anything in the M A S C version that you want to add, that keeping your version is is good.
We we sorry, Attorney Nicholson?
Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
The last time we renamed a building was Lynn Tech. And I believe the superintendent came to us and we voted on it. The M A S C's version obviously has multiple levels of, you know, involvement. Maybe that's a good thing. You know, because getting the P T A, P T O involved, the school council, you know, making sure that the the school committees, the school community is on board is what's being done in your version. I'm indifferent.
So I would say that that LIN version does not preclude that. It just doesn't spell it out.
Correct. Correct.
It does talk about the wishes of the community, including parents and students should be considered.
And we have to correct the superintendent. Second paragraph.
Will do. Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm fine, Attorney Nicholson, either, either one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that, I think that having a process i- is important, um, and that the input is important. But maybe having some flexibility as to what exactly that process looks like, uh, for the given scenario is helpful. Then using the, the, the LIN one, it gives us more flexibility so that it can be tailored to the situation. Okay, great.
We just named, um, that new building of the annex. We used that process and it was valid.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
So the last, um, policy in this section is memorials. Um, and there, there is no section, there is no policy on memorials in the LIN manual. The, the policy on memorials in the, when I've done policy work with different committees, the policy is very vastly based on community, um, the community traditions and values. I would suggest that maybe you do want to have a policy though. Just because I think it's something that's always easier to have a policy in place than trying to respond to a situ- a situation with, when it comes up sort of out of the blue, um, without any policy to sort of, uh, frame your thinking.
Boy, you're doing.
And, you know, if it's something that you want to pursue, I can, I can find other examples of policies. I've seen policies that require waiting a certain amount of time, um, before a memorial is established. I've seen parameters around, um, where they can be and what they could be. Um, but I know that there are times when it becomes, um, somewhat contentious. When, um, you know, when everyone's emotions are high and, you know, parents or a group may want to do something that may be sort of in conflict with what the thinking of the district is. Um, and that guidance may be helpful.
Does anybody have any, uh, initial reactions or questions?
I, I think we should just leave it there.
This policy?
Yes.
So this is not, this is not your policy. This is the, um, MAST model policy.
Yeah, we should have talked to-
Okay.
I, I think it's important. I, I think that, um, you know, our school community is still a part of the community. Um, and, you know, just off the bat, you know, last year we lost Lauren Mizetti, who was a, a very well-respected teacher at Lynn English. Um, and, you know, I know that her kids are starting something for, for their, for their mother and, and, and whatnot. And when I was younger, you know, we, 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 we lost a few students, um, one being my cousin. And, um, it's, it's tough for the community, but it's, it's important that we're able to, um, take those emotions, um, and do something good with them. And, um, that's what, where I think that these memorials could, could, uh, this policy could, could be helpful and, and, and in the direction for the, for the, for the city.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this policy. I mean, I think Ms. Presser has explained the value of having it. So.
Me too.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
I, I am too. I'm glad it's there. I'd like to add it. A lot of people have passed in our schools unexpectedly.
So that, that is the end of section F, one of our shorter sections. Um, and that actually, um, that's what I have tonight. Um, that's what I have.
Okay, great. Yeah, we know. We understand that, um, we had to shift some things around, uh, to preserve administrative talk. Absolutely the right, uh, decision, given everything that's going on. Um, so that, so that sounds good. Do we want to, um, schedule our next meeting?
So I guess, you know, part of, part of my, I think we should schedule another meeting. But I think we need a, maybe a little bit of guidance from, um, Dr. Todd Wyler, um, about what's reasonable to expect from staff. Um, in terms of time to be able to get to some of the other topics. You have, um, section E is, um, support programs. So there's things in there about transportation, about special education, um, and, uh, a couple of other topics. I can't remember off the top of my head. There's some facility, building of facilities, things in there. Um, that, you know, more directly, more directed to upkeep and so forth, not the, the basic ones that we talked about tonight. Um, there, um, section I and J are big sections. One covers instruction, the other covers students. Um, you know, we've done a sec- a portion of section J in the discipline code and the discipline policies. But there's also a lot of policies around, again, some special education policies, um, and other policies involving students. K and L are very short. Um, K is, um, and may not involve as much, um, staff time as some of the other, as some of the curve. So we might be able to tackle that pretty soon. Um, but I think we really need some guidance on Dr. Todd Wyler about when he thinks staff will be available to do sort of the pre-work. Um, that I think has been very effective in moving us along with the policy project.
And before Dr. Todd Wyler, Mr. Ford, did you have something here?
Well, I was just going to suggest maybe, um, uh, holding, uh, E in advance because it may be impacted by the, the Corona for some time. Could we skip over and continue going and then come back? E, maybe even in the fall?
Yeah.
Because we, we don't, we don't see any end to the transportation issues or some of the other COVID issues over the next couple of months. We should, I think, move on and then come back to E.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's worked fine for us to jump around. Um, you know, we did J when we needed to, we did, you know, and, um, uh, Ms. Presser and Ms. Jules are keeping, keeping good notes. So I'm not worried about us getting lost as we, uh, go through this. So that's fine with me.
So I guess the, the question is, um,
Dr. Todd Wyler.
How, 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 how far in the future would you want to schedule something so I can do a good chunk of work in between?
Um, yeah, no, I was, I was just kind of looking at the calendar, um, which is, uh, it's pretty jammed. Like we, we are, we are pretty busy, um, right up through, you know, right, right to the very end. Uh, with the development of protocols, administration of, uh, in-cast, uh, the development of summer learning. I mean, it's, we're going to be cooking for a while here. And so, um, would it be possible, um, uh, for maybe me and Dorothy to have a conversation, uh, and, and maybe I can understand more deeply what her needs are. Uh, and then we can make about a proposal or schedule electronically. I'll toss out some other dates, uh, and times for folks to consider.
Sure. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, uh, Ms. Presser, thank you again, as always, um, and to my colleagues, uh, for, uh, advancing us along. I think that, that is all that we have.
We should return. Only if Deb hands out the three baskets behind her to you, me and, and Jared.
No, Deb. What about me, Michael? You are so good, Deb.
There's four. Uh, second.
All right, that's the second, and therefore, uh, roll call.
Chairman Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Mr. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. DM Ryan A.